List that compiles pretty much what the discussions are gonna be.
Well, these are the proposed topics. The elected school board, obviously. The restoration of HUR funding.
How many years has it been? Six?
Proposed, or at least a discussion about the maintenance of effort process. Disparity grants. We're still not at full funding on disparity grants. Zero waste. I think everybody saw when we looked at our tenure solid waste program that the zero waste mandates are gonna be very problematic. School construction. The CADE formula restor- full funding of the CADE formula. I think as everybody probably knows, the state hasn't fully funded the CADE formula, which provides support to the community colleges since the CADE formula was formulated. And if we're looking at job creation and job training and retraining, our community colleges are our best training ground right now. So, we think that's very critical. The BAT regulations on septic. We just talked about sprinklers, but the bat system is a little bit problematic, particularly with modest homes. And most of the homes being built in Wycomico County are fairly modest residences.
Is that the, you're talking about those mounds?
No, best available technology.
It could be mound or it could be septic tank.
The pump?
Yeah. It increased the cost of a new septic system or the replacement of an existing system that failed dramatically. And it is, and it is a barrier to new home construction because of that increased cost. And when you couple that.
Could you ask?
It's also, it's also.
It's also commercial, 'cause we, three years ago, built a community center at our church. And from out here, we got the largest mound system in the county. It cost a large sum of money.
Laura, you can't lock the door.
She's not locking it. She's just.
Okay, just, okay, just ask that mayor to keep it down over there.
Tell him to read. It's a solid open session.
Still on air? Sorry, Wayne.
Lost my train of thought. However, I think you'll recall that the septic regulation, if fully implemented, would reduce, I believe, it was estimated, 2% of the nitrogen discharge into the Chesapeake Bay. And.
Very minimal.
Very, very minimal, when you consider other sources that are not being addressed as aggressively. Those are the items that we had. We would probably also lead out with a very brief summary of the presentation that we did in New York, just to give our legislators their bearings with regard to what we presented to the credit rating agencies regarding the health of the county's finances.
One thing, and this is one first thing to draw up here, is the maintenance of effort. Just to give you a little bit of insight now for next year's budget, we've already been told by Board of Education that our maintenance of effort will probably go up almost $800,000 this year, because they're expecting 300 more students enrollment. Part of it is the immigrants, part of it is the having to be 17 years old now to quit school. But a lot of it has to do with pre-K. So, we're looking at a hit of $800,000 alone, more to the Board of Education.
It's interesting that they believe that most of that increased enrollment is in the elementary. So, that was, quite frankly, that was a fiscal curve. They were very good at the number. And that's gonna be a recurring number for, so it's $800,000 in operating costs.
So, it's maintenance of effort per student, but they're expanding the number of students that have to be served, is basically what's going on, so.
So, when enrollment increases, your maintenance of effort, it will increase your. It's $2700 a student.
Was there any explanation as to why that big increase occurred?
They just, they just got the preliminary numbers in that. And they're beginning to do their analysis of the dynamics, of the dynamics that are leading to that increase.
That's huge.
And all, yes, very, very.
We've seen, if nothing else, a decline over the years, or not a rise, but, you know.
Past two years, it's gone that way?
Yeah. All right, there's something else about this list that's happened with the thing that happened in France. How would the council feel about talking to the delegation about how we would send a message to the governor that, about the immigration from Syria coming into the state? I know Maryland has not sent that message to the president yet. And I was wondering if that could have an effect on us if they do start taking the Syrian immigrants in.
It's definitely a factor.
Do we wanna put it on our list? I mean, that's a council consensus whether we need to. That could have a lot of ramifications, not just on our schools.
I think you could add it to the list. It's open for discussion. You know, we're not, we're not talking about coming to any resolution with anything, but.
No, it's not a resolution, just a consensus among us that we address that with the delegation.
Right, that's, that's a good point. We can just have open, free conversation about it. But addressing maintenance of effort in a Thornton bill is something we're gonna have to look at soon, because I think all counties are starting to have the same problem. So, that's why we need to talk to them about changing the legislation to a certain extent.
Maintenance of effort was on, was on the council list as well, so.
Well, we just happened to have our CIP with the Board of Education yesterday. And that dropped on us at that point in time, so.
I was up at a retreat for the Board of Directors for Mako last week. And two of the topics that are on there are the highway user revenues. We did meet with Hogan's administration. And they said that it is an accelerated transportation plan this year. The plan is still an eight-year phase-in back to full amount. And this first year, $51 million in the budget.
Coming back to the counties?
Coming back to the counties. So, it sounds like they're 100% sticking with it. We even did, we talked to Senator as well, who was in favor of it as well.
I think it's just one of the same, we're gonna have to say, and ditto on HUR, 'cause everybody's saying the same thing, and, you know, there's no sense of spending a lot of time on that next week. We'd like to make this meeting, you know, a two-hour meeting, and be out of there. We probably won't do Christmas shopping.
For the, for the BAT systems, we have Secretary Grumbles, the new Secretary of Department, and he's supporting that the BAT systems are only required in the rural areas. So, any other place would not be.
That makes sense.
And that's how it's supposed, it was supposed to been, to begin with, it was the start.
Yeah. Going back to highway user revenue, it's fabulous that the governor's supporting it. It's still, I believe, important that we discuss it with our legislature, because the legislature, as you know, holds a, plays a huge part in the budget process. So, we need to keep the heat up on the entire legislature. Counties do.
Well, it is again this year, one of, it is again this year, one of Mako's primary legislative initiatives, restoration of HUR. I think this is the third year in a row.
Yes. And the BAT systems are on there as well.
When will we get, I guess, in a couple of days, you guys can get an after-list back to us of everything? Good, great. So, we'll know.
You're all input.
Good. Any other questions or recommendations from anybody? I can't think of anything either, John. You had one that you gave to me, and I didn't get on. I'm trying to think, I know, but I'm brain-dead this morning.
It was BAT, it's the last email.
It was BAT, there was more, the CADE formula. But there might have been a third one, Matt. We'll let you know, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay.
You don't need us for the closed work session?
No, thank you. We're good, thank you very much for asking. Moving on with the agenda discussion as far as the letter to the Eastern Shore delegation for the school board appointments. I'm sure you've seen many of what we've been sending around. I appreciate all the council's input on, on the specifics. And, no, no, we are passing this over to Mark Kilman to help us with this. I know you've been putting a lot of it together, Mark.
Well, Councilman Hall has a very marked-up version of the outline, so I guess, I guess he has some ideas.
He's got red line version.
Exactly. So, since he's got some good ideas, let's, let's see what he has to say.
Well, this is, this is based on the latest version that we got on Friday. And I have quite a number of things that I think are very important to this issue. And I think it'll simplify things, and I think that's what our intent is. And to just go through them very easily. You should have a copy of the last draft.
Everybody has that?
The one that Mark sent out Friday.
Okay, okay, I think we're good.
All right, in, one, voters A elected. Two, the last line in that said is, "A person ceases to reside in the district is no longer an eligible voter, then the member has forfeited his or her seat." It probably should be must forfeit his or her seat. Easy one. The, and does that make sense?
Sure.
Fine.
The next one is.
How about, John, what if we say shall? That seems to be terminology in all legislation. Shall or may.
Shall forfeit.
Shall forfeit.
Shall forfeit. Yeah, that's good. The next one is on four, same section. Two or more candidates running a district at large, all shall be placed on a primary election ballot. The cost of the election, or primary election, though. And I, I'm sure I'm wrong, but I assume it runs somewhere in the neighborhood to $12,000 to $18,000 to run a primary election. And I'm not sure that the intent on this should be borne by the voters, number one. Number two is, all a primary does is eliminate one or two other people, whereas plurality should elect the people and not necessarily primary with a runoff.
Well, this is a primary at the same time as, like, the primary for council members. I mean, it's not, it's the addition of just an extra line on there.
Since this is a Board of Education and not a council member, the expense, again, would outweigh any benefit, I think, where plurality should be, make the decision.
Will there be expense, even if there's already a primary election occurring?
No, in that case, there wouldn't be.
And so, there will already be a primary?
Not necessarily.
No?
Only if it's contested.
There's no special election, I mean, this is, this is in concert with.
I know, but there doesn't necessarily have to be a primary. Even in the council, if you're, if you don't have any competition.
But there's, it's still on the ballot.
But there is a primary election, no matter if there's contested council or not. There's a contested race somewhere in the state.
Yeah.
Well, somewhere in the state.
Yeah, and that's the same election.
It's a gubernatorial election.
Yes, the gubernatorial election primary that this would happen in. So, I mean, there's gotta be.
And it is a gubernatorial.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, it's, it's.
There will be a primary.
I mean, much like you were on the primary election ballot unopposed. If it's unopposed, you're, you know, the name is still there, so.
Good point.
So, yeah, I mean, you know.
Okay.
All right, but to get past the point of the primaries there, are you also saying that you would rather everyone be on the ballot?
Absolutely.
At the general?
Absolutely.
Skip the primary?
Plurality should make the decision.
How's everybody feel about that? I don't really see it.
I'd like to see the top two. That's how the city of Salisbury did it in their nonpartisan elections. If they had more, they had a primary to sort of, so, I mean, come on. If you have candidates, they probably wanna know in the primary whether they stand a chance, and that way they don't have to campaign all the way through to November.
Was there a primary?
No, I don't mean this last time around.
Oh, oh, oh.
They have, they have a nonpartisan, and it's the top two move forward.
Okay, I think that's what other counties do, too.
Okay. In, again, same section five, terms of office for the school board members should begin on the first Monday of December after the election. And there's nowhere in here that states when the term ends.
Well, when the new term begins, the whole term ends.
It should be in there.
Well, I guess we could.
Until the end of the term, right?
Yeah, at the end of that sentence, you could just say, we will cease the.
Serve till the end of the term?
Good enough.
Question? Are we dictating when they hold their meetings?
No, no. We don't, I don't think there's any reason for the council to be involved in this as much as we are in this legislation.
The meetings are on Tuesdays, that's why I was wondering why it was necessary for Tuesday.
In the, in the next one, in six. Now, the student member shall serve one-year term, and she'll be a high school senior or junior. Well, it's very unfortunate, but they don't take office until the first of December, which means he only serves till June, if it's a senior. So, he's only serving for six months.
Probably not for a year.
No, it isn't. If you have a senior, he's still only going to serve for six months, because he won't take office till the following December.
Well, hey, I'm sure that could be tweaked to have the student serve in September, or start in September, or something like that.
Would you be happy with a junior who will leave, serve at least for a year?
No.
So, are you suggesting it not be a senior at all?
I, you know, first of all, I don't want any involvement on how we pick who serves, but I don't think it should be a senior. I think it would be more realistic to assume a junior is.
That's a good point. I mean, 'cause, 'cause when September comes, who's gonna be there?
Sure. The junior, not the senior.
Well, the junior's only, junior would only serve the same amount, not until he becomes a senior.
The senior graduates in, in spring. He won't be there for the next September.
Okay, so, yeah, the junior would come back the next year as a senior.
Exactly.
As a senior.
Exactly. So, you'd eliminate the senior, because he'd only serve half of the term, is what.
Well. That's curious, because I believe most of the, or at least, at least some of the other counties, they stipulate seniors being seated. And I think, Larry, has it, has it been typically a senior in our county?
Yes, every meeting, it's a senior SGA that attends from the high schools.
So, do they change by September? Is there another senior that shows up?
Yeah, it's, well, all the schools show up to, to give their report, but there's always one seated at the, at the table.
Are you saying it's the SGA president?
Yes.
Should we make, put it in here, that the SGA president is, the standing SGA president would be that appointed?
Well, should we? So, it doesn't affect the date?
It doesn't affect the date?
Well, all we have to do is just say the student member can serve starting in September. I mean, that, that would simplify it.
It would.
Do we care whether it's a junior, senior?
Well, I think it's easier for a senior to leave class.
Just say the student member shall serve for one year.
Sure, yeah, let them figure out when it's served. It doesn't have to start in December.
Great, great, okay, thanks, John. Is that everything, John?
He's got a lot more.
You did get that, Mark, you okay on that?
It's just, he just serves, the person just serves for a one-year term.
Yeah. Actually, junior, senior?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fine.
All right.
And this did change a little bit with this last sendout. On seven, the first line, "If there are vacancies on the Board of Education, the council shall fill the vacancies by names provided by the nominating committee." Why should the county council be involved?
It's gotta be somebody to fill the vacancy.
Why not let the county executive make that decision instead of the council?
He didn't want to.
He didn't want to.
Too bad.
I think the, the people, the stakeholders who are involved were quite clear that they were more comfortable with a seven-member body representing the county making these appointments, as opposed to one individual executive.
You know, I hate the idea of the county council being involved in the Board of Education. That's what we will be.
Well, they especially were concerned with the fact that the executive is the one who's the first stage in negotiations in any type of funding, so they felt more comfortable with the council as opposed to the executive.
Mr. Hall, are you suggesting that in the event of vacancies of the student, that the vacancies be filled through the school system process?
No, no, I think the county executive should have the option of filling the vacancies and not the county council. That way, since we do have so much impact on the Board of Education's budget, it will be less effort for us to show favoritism, and we'll have more of an impact, I don't, you know, it's, again, it's up to the entire council.
And it's already been pared down by the nominating commission, so it's not like we are doing the nominating or the search part and the confirming, so being.
That's, that's true.
Pared down already, so it kind of removes us from that process somewhat. We're just there for the confirmation.
Right, yeah, the commission, it's just approving the commission's recommendation.
Yeah, the commission's trying to take out some of the favorite, you know, the undue influence that I think you're concerned about. That's, that's kinda why it's.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, leave it in?
Yep.
Okay. On same section number two, "If both the names submitted are unacceptable to the council, the council shall return the names to the commission with reasons the names are unacceptable."
That was requested by Gary Hammer.
I, I think that's.
Where are you, John?
Number two.
Seven, two?
Seven, two.
Seven, two.
First page.
Okay, seven, two, okay.
On the first page.
That's very, really uncharacteristic. You're a legislative body, a legislative body does not need to give reasons for its decision.
That's right. I, I'm very much against that. I think that our decisions on making those, that giving that information is inappropriate, just plain inappropriate.
Well, I, I think the thought process was that if the council would reject the two individuals that the nominating commission forwarded to us, it would be helpful to the nominating commission to know why we rejected them. Say that if we thought that there should be more female members on the school board or somebody with a business background, that we say, this is, this is why, this is what we would prefer to see. And to tell them, so that they can be guided, so that, you know, it wouldn't just be four people back and forth, and again, ping pong.
But then we're directing the outcome from the nominating committee, which is what we're trying to not do.
Well, I mean, we're, we're directing it by rejecting people, too, so, yeah, this is, but, I mean.
I'm not in favor of that either.
Not in favor of what?
I don't think the council needs to give a specific reason. I think informally, we probably could tell them that, but I don't think it should be mandated that the council give a specific reason.
Yeah. And again, we have the commission submit names of additional qualified individuals. The council can only refuse candidates selected by the nominating committee twice. And a name from a third set of candidates shall be approved by council. I, I.
John, let me back up if I can interrupt you.
You're gonna take all of two out, is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Hall?
Perme, all of two out. I would take all of two out.
Well, we have to make sure we have concurrence. Does everybody, what's the rest of the council's opinion on that?
Where's this?
Uh, two.
We've gone back to.
Taking all of?
Take all of two out.
It says if the, if both names submitted are unacceptable, the council shall return the names to the commission with reasons why. The argument was that we felt that.
Aren't we crossing out the with reasons why the names are acceptable?
Right, I'm trying to get a consensus from the council. Is that okay with everyone?
Two also, two also says that the county council can only reject names put forth twice.
You were kinda setting yourself up to have to approve somebody. A name of the third set shall be approved by the council. I mean, it could be.
That's, that's why I'm.
Somebody could play games.
That's why I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting you take all two out.
Yeah, somebody could play games there. Maybe we could find something to replace two.
Yeah, how about three?
Yeah, well, yeah.
We have three?
I, I think, I think the concern was that you could just have an endless game of names up, names back, you know, it could take two years to fill it, because, you know, there's a, there needs to be some way to resolve a stalemate if the council and the commission, you know, the commission suggests names the council doesn't like.
Wouldn't it end up ultimately reflecting negatively on you all if you didn't? Just an idea, I mean, if you guys kept rejecting people, there's also the political considerations.
I think you're absolutely right, Rachel. We, that shows we have no confidence, confidence in the committee that's recommending the names.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we can strike number two entirely, 'cause there has to be a process established if we don't agree with the initial two points. There has to be something that says, okay, where do we go from here? There has to be something that says, go back to the drawing room, all right?
Yeah, yeah, what to do if we don't accept the two names?
That's what I mean, you need something to replace two, but not quite as in-depth as what.
I, I think that you say both the names submitted are unacceptable to the council, the council will return the names to the commission. The commission will then submit names of additionally, additional qualified individuals.
Yeah.
Okay.
And leave it at that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And then it can go on for imperperity if it has to.
So, scratch out.
I doubt that'll happen, you know.
No, that's, at, at some point, one body or the other is gonna realize they're singing the wrong tune.
And, you know, we're spending a lot, we're probably spending more time on getting this drafted than it'll ever be spent used.
I agree.
And that's fine, you know, but, you know, we want it right, when it goes in. Hopefully, you know, the elections will go, and, yeah.
Okay, moving on.
What are we striking? If we were to just say, if both the names submitted are unacceptable to the council, the council shall return the name to the commission. The commission will then submit names of additional qualified individuals. Until, what? Until a final decision is made?
Just period.
And you say both, how about either or both? Because you're leaving yourself if one's good and one's not.
Well, if one's good, be approved, the one.
Yeah, but you're saying both the names.
Commission shall then submit names of additional qualified individuals until.
Well, it's a given.
It should be just if, if names are, not both names, but if names are.
Because they just submit one that's good and one that isn't. Somebody could have the argument of saying, well, you say both here. You know, they're gonna, you know.
If the names submitted are unacceptable to the council, and put name, and then put parentheses around the S. So, if names submitted are unacceptable to the council, the council will return the name to the commission. And then the commission will then submit names of additional qualified individuals.
And I assume this is reflected in the next section about the nomination.
And then strike the rest of that.
Strike the rest of it.
Yes.
Same. Okay, number three, commission shall be composed of eight members. And, and Mark, I don't really mean to tear this out.
Tear it away.
No, you're doing a good job.
But, but you have A, B, and C, and then you have five or six other organizations. Well, when you take A, B, C, you're discriminating against those other five or eight more organizations. I think you should lump them all into one, number one, instead of listing one member appointed from each of the following organizations. Just have one committee, and those are part of the committee.
Well, understood. I think the issue was that from going to Annapolis, the idea would be that if we're just, you know, having like 15 groups that have a pool, that we have eight names. Concern was that there would be a lack of diversity on the council, so there would be the need to have, like, the NAACP have input. So, if we did not have that in there, I foresee that leading to problems in Annapolis, that this would be the way that we could evade the responsibility.
Well, I think your next line, to extend practical, the commission shall reflect gender, ethnic, and racial makeup of the county. And I, I think that explains the commission members that are previous to that. I, I agree to you, with you, that it would be nice to highlight one group over another. But, you know, when we, but I don't think it's fair in saying that these entities are better than the other entities. You know, that, that reeks of discrimination, man.
So, you wanna see under section C, you just wanna see eight bullet points?
Eight organizations, well, I had eight, seven organizations two weeks ago. Then we went to the pool issue.
I'm gonna eliminate some, and I think you'll see why.
I, I understand your point, John. You wanna eliminate, you wanna just make eight bullet points.
Eight bullet points.
Saying, commission shall be.
Eight organizations, I'm cool with that, that's what I had before.
So, you're saying it would be composed of eight members, NAACP, Wycomico County Education Association, parent of a child with special needs.
Got a problem with that?
Well, hang on a second. Appointment consensus from Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, right?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think you addressed, Joe's concern, Joe's concern last time, I believe, was that we were leaving people out, potentially, if they only had eight listed. But in these eight that we've listed, we say each incorporated municipality, where we say one appointment by consensus, so that kind of broadens, even though it's narrowed down, it kind of broadens the pool there. Does that, does that address your concern?
Well, I, that addresses that concern, but I also think that each municipality should have. have a seat that they take.
Well, let me, let me tell you my next suggestion.
It is- It spreads it out over the county.
See how, see how this sounds.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
Inner, inner bullet points. We have the Chamber of Commerce of each of the areas that have Chamber of Commerce, but we also have each municipality. Now, each municipality has a Chamber of Commerce in it.
No, they don't.
Well, it doesn't.
Sharp Town doesn't, Pittsville doesn't.
Yeah, Pittsville's got a Chamber.
Pittsville's got a Chamber.
Yeah, I said, each municipality has, each municipality has a Chamber of Commerce.
Well, not, not, not Mardella.
Well, and the, and the ones that don't, that's okay, but shouldn't the municipalities draw from the Chamber of Commerce?
Saying that's duplication?
It's a duplication.
We're just trying to get variety. We're trying to get government and business involved.
I understand.
We're trying to get government role and business role.
Yeah, but you, again, you're duplicating, so, uh-
It's not duplicating. You get business and government, two separate entities.
Okay. Um, I have a question.
Do you have anything else to do?
We're busy talking.
What you on the airport, mission season, what are you doing? Oh, that was gonna keep you busy.
And I'm sorry I bring this to you, so, it's really, really not fair.
It's fun.
But, but Joe, uh, you know, like-
I'm just kidding.
I know you are. And like you, I feel this is very important, and, and if we're going to move it forward, it has to be moved forward in a format that's logical.
Backer back to the special needs.
Who appoints the special needs?
That would be the, whoever appoints the commission, so that's, um-
No, no.
Yep.
Who points the special needs person?
Good point.
Yeah.
Who?
The county executive with council current appoints the members of the commission.
Yeah.
Five.
Okay, should that be do it?
May I make a, may I make a quick point on the shall versus must that came up earlier? Um, there is a move in the legal community to do away with the word shall in legal documents, um, or at least to limit its use to its original intent. Um, totally up to you all whether you want to follow that or not, but I just thought I would bring it to your attention, that if we are going to use shall, it should at least be done consistently so that it's done throughout the entire document, um, because if you use must or will or something else, if this were ever scrutinized legally, it could be an issue. And the reason it's being moved away from is because it's been used so ambiguously over the years that they're saying it's better to just use must or will, depending on what you actually want to convey with that.
So, Larry lets you have the document before it goes there, and then you can-
I can, I can go through it for all those must, shall, wills, and, and, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we've, we're past special needs now.
Well, have we passed, are we still on?
If he's over.
He's over.
He's good.
Appoint the special needs person.
County executive.
County executive appoints-
The county executive shall be appointing-
The county executive is appointing everybody, is that it?
Yes.
Yes.
With council concurrence.
Parent special needs.
Uh, on same, uh, uh, same three, six, "Term of office for commission members shall be no more than four years." And that might be a challenge, and why should we dictate the term of office for commission members since they are polled or pooled and concurred by the county executive? Why should we set a term limit on commission members?
Well, one reason would be to afford a new county executive an opportunity to, uh, have his or her views considered by the appointment of the commission.
Well, when it says no more than four years, then that indicates that the county executive cannot reappoint them.
Then just, shall be four years?
Four years would be good.
I think that would be good.
That's a good point. I see your point.
Will be four years.
Will or shall, must be.
Next thing you know, we'll have an elected commission.
Yeah.
Was that your next point?
Don't say that too loud.
Well, I don't know. Should it be elected or elected?
Number eight, "The names being considered for the commission will be made public." And the commission will hold at least one public hearing on a selection of nominees before making their recommendations. I don't think a public hearing is appropriate. Just, just not appropriate again. You know, we, we don't want to vilify, um, the commission. And, and you might, and there might be someone who will stand up and vilify.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we take. That's what you take when you do things in public. People get to say what they wanna say.
Is it in here that the council will hold a public hearing before we make a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would suffice.
No, the, no, the commission will hold one public hearing.
Is it also there that the council holds a public hearing before we agree?
I, I think the, the thought was that you have this, the current process is shredded in secrecy where nobody knows who's being recommended. But this is keeping it as open as possible. The public has a chance to weigh in to the commission before they make a decision. Open, transparent, everybody knows who's being nominated, no backroom deals like are being made now.
I think we may be sorry that this comes, this happens.
If the commission has to be out in public, you're saying?
Exactly.
Yeah.
The council's holding a public hearing before we approve it.
Right.
So it is being set at to some degree.
Exactly.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you, they would probably thank us, Mark, if we eliminated that, and then they wouldn't have to spend the money, because the commission would have to pay for an actual public hearing to be a-
And, and how many, how many of the members of the board will this commission have the responsibility of recommending candidates toward it? It's just, it's not everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that-
The commission, the commission will put forth names to fill only two.
Cross off number eight.
Well, no, I mean, I think keeping it in public should be fine, but if you wanna get rid of the public hearing, I think the expense issue makes sense.
So just the list of names being considered by the commission if we make public?
Yeah.
Go ahead. "The vacancies shall occur thirty days prior to the primary campaign filing deadline. Special election to fill the vacancies, uh, will be held during the, uh, presidential election."
A lot of cost.
Yeah, the expense again, if I was in a special election, I think.
It's minimal, because there's already a primary and presidential election happening. It just adds, you add a name to the ballot.
Is that the intent?
Yeah, that's the way it's written.
Yeah, it's, a special election is when you hold one without a regularly scheduled election.
Yeah, this is concurrent with the presidential election, with the presidential primary, presidential general election.
Well, then you would wanna take out special election.
Yeah, it was called a special, in state law, it's called special election, because it's a special-
Even though it takes, even though it takes place during a presidential?
Yeah, it, because it's a special election for that seat, which is not regularly scheduled during that, during that time.
So the presidential election will be the special election?
Yeah, concurrent with.
I am, my thought of a special election for an office is, uh, it's an election just for that office, cause, cause nobody else is running.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's season.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, I'm fine. Sign it up. Is that it? You're kidding me. Just start, you just got on a roll.
Did you, uh, so did we figure out the eight members?
I don't care.
I got one question. Um, why is the process for the appointed, um, way laid out like the elected and the hybrid is?
Well, this, the first section under the elected, the commission process is in case there's a vacancy.
No, 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 no. You missed my point.
Okay.
This is gonna be on the ballot, right?
Yeah.
Elected explaining how the elected process is, and the hybrid is. Why isn't the appointed on the ballot and explaining how that process work?
It will be on the ballot in the first, very first line.
Right, yeah.
So the voters will be asked to choose whether to retain the current process or select one of the two.
Okay, my explaining is, my reason is, why isn't it explained it how the appointed process work? Like the elected, like you explain how the elected process is being worked?
Well, well, yeah, a- at the end, the very last paragraph that explains the language will be on the ballot. This, this outline is for the legislation. The, the whole legislation won't be on the ballot. It'll just be an explanation of elected Board of Education, um, you know, with, in, in the very last paragraph of the sheet, and, or you retain the current process. Th- this is to outline what, if the voters choose elected, this is what, we're going, we're going, this is what will happen. If the voters choose hybrid, this is what'll happen, but if they choose appointed, it just continues with what's already there. We, we, we don't have to spell that in legislation, cause it's already, it's the current process.
Okay, how's it gonna be on the ballot?
The la- the last, the last paragraph says, there'll be, um, all right, I'll just read that. The county gov- the Board of Elections will, um, that should be printed on the ballot to be used in this election. The title of this act, underneath the title on a separate lines, a square box or box opposite the words for an elected Board of Education with one non-voting Board of Education student member, and a corresponding square box with the words for a hybrid Board of Education consisting of two at-large members appointed through the school board nominating commission, five elected members from the five county voting districts, and one non-voting Board of Education student representative, and a corresponding square box opposite the words for a Board of Education appointed by the governor. That, that, that's how, like Caroline County, it's, it's kinda copied from Caroline County.
There's no mention of the appointed.
That last one.
Yeah, opposite the words for Board of Education appointed by the governor.
That's the current system.
The ballot won't have all these definitions, or?
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be elected, hybrid, appointed would be the three, three things on the ballot, a- and, and that would be in the legislative language that, that mandates how we, um, you know, when the bill's passed, it would have that in there.
Or who's gonna make the determination of which, in which order the choices appear on the ballot?
Alphabetical.
Well-
They all start with four.
I mean, however, it's in the legislation. Yeah, I mean-
No, no.
Yeah, it, it is in the legislation, yeah.
Some people think there's a science.
Appointed, elected, hybrid. Alphabetical. Is that what you're asking?
Some people think there's a science to the order in which questions appear on the ballot, so some people think it's important what goes first, what comes second in terms of what their proposed outcome is. So I'm ju- I'm just asking that question in a-
I, I mean, the legislation will spell out how it's on the ballot. If you want us to get into order, we could-
The order, the legislation will spell that out, but who will make, are we saying we're gonna leave it up to the House, the, to, to the state to determine which, in which order on the ballot the different choices occur?
Doesn't word-
I, I really don't, I, I really don't care, but I want you to think about the fact that some people think there's, that makes a difference in the outcome.
The candidates are in alphabetical order.
I know candidates are in alphabetical order.
No, candidates aren't.
That depends on the year.
Yeah, or is it party? By party. By, can't think of candidates by party.
Is it by party?
Yes, by year, or who's in office.
I, I agree with you. It should be appointed, uh, elected, hybrid.
Yeah, let's, let's give him credit.
Let's give him credit. All right.
I know. Is your question resolved?
Yeah, okay. With, with those changes, Mr. Hall, is that, is there a consensus? I guess we should probably wait for Joe when he gets back, but is there a consensus to accept this with these changes?
I don't have any further.
Everybody good here?
I'm good.
We're good?
Good.
That's consensus.
Um, so-
Yes.
I'll rewrite it and send it around again. Okay.
Gotta say it, Drew.
Now, we also, we also need to start figuring out how we're gonna get this into the newspaper, because educating the public has been expressed as the critical most important thing we can do.
He's been on it. Greg's been on it since the beginning.